Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, December 3, 2018. I would ask all present to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the City Administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to the agenda. With the agenda, we have an addition under the payment of claims to approve amending the effective date of the contractor agreement with Don Kosak from November 19 to October 15. With that, what is the council's pleasure with the agenda and the addition?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Drowba.
Second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. Approve the agenda with the addition. Discussion on the motion or the agenda. Are there none question?
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Agenda is approved with the addition. Thank you. Move to the minutes of the November 19 special city council meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Drowba to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would vote yes. Motion is carried and the minutes for the special meeting are approved and then we have the regular city council meeting of November 19. Those minutes, please.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Kraus to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Discussion on the motion or the regular city council meeting minutes? Are there none question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried and the minutes of the regular city council meeting are also approved. Thank you. We have, under the payment of claims, then, the effective date for the independent contractor agreement with Don Kosak from November 19 to October 15 as he did some work in consultation with members of the city administration with regard to work on our Internet and other equipment. Council's pleasure with that change of dates.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Drowba.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried and the change of dates is approved. Thank you. Move to the resolution approving the transfers and the payment of claims. We have one transfer and that's from Fund 812 to the General Fund 101, $440.22. We have claims in the City of International Falls, $232,067.09. Airport Commission claims, $39,350.90. Airport Commission Terminal Project Phase 1 claims, none there. Phase 2 claims, $422,015.66. Runway Reconstruction Project at the airport, Phase 1 claims of $51,460. And Phase 2 on the runway reconstruction, claims of $87,490. Council's pleasure with the transfer and the payment of claims.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve.
Second.
Second by...
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson. Haven't heard from you. Thank you.
I'll make up for that.
Thank you. Discussion with regard to the resolution or the transfer of claims. Are there none question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted approving the transfer and payment of claims. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time? Out on the agenda and there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Thank you. We'll go to the second and final reading of the ordinance, the fifth series, Amending the Code of Ordinances in Chapter 3, Section 3 through 5, B and H, to establish a requirement for water and sewer bills to be in the property owner's name. And that there's a process for moving to having requirement of water and sewer bills to be in the property owner's name as outlined in that ordinance change. Council's pleasure.
I'll approve that resolution.
Counselor Jackson approves that resolution.
Ordinance.
Ordinance change, please.
Ordinance.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
I'll second.
And second by Counselor Drowba. Are there no further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried and the second and final reading has been passed. We will move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes approval of the 2019 license renewals and that includes Quarters Incorporated cigarette license and gasoline pump license. Approval for travel expenses for Counselor Drowba to attend the Blanden Broadband Communities kickoff gathering on December 5 in Grand Rapids. Approval of travel and training expenses for paramedic Nathan Myers to attend the Minnesota Ambulance Association Teaching and Learning Conference in Bloomington. Approve the travel and training expenses for the building official to attend the 63rd Annual Institute for Building Officials in Brooklyn Center. And approve travel and training expenses for the office clerk to attend the 63rd Annual Institute for Building Officials in Brooklyn Center. And approve the 2019 city council regular meeting schedule. Council's pleasure with the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Drowba.
Second.
And by Counselor Briggs. Question?
May I?
Well, is it point of order?
Just point of order. Just a question.
Thank you.
Chief, any problems with the proposed cigarette? Okay. Thank you.
Good. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Consent agenda is approved. Go to new business. Item number 100 new business is the license renewals. We include tobacco and liquor.
For years, you're going to be approving marijuana.
Really?
No, it doesn't happen. It's coming.
Am I missing a page?
We don't have marijuana on the agenda tonight.
Oh, no. Thank you. Now I find it too. Not yet, anyway. Thank you. The license requests are Border Bar and Pizza House, a 3-2 off-sale license, pool table license, off-sale liquor license, on-sale liquor license, restaurant license, Sunday liquor license, jukebox license, and amusement games. Rose Garden, 3-2 on-sale restaurant and bar and restaurant license. The Viking Lounge LLC, off-sale liquor license, on-sale liquor license, restaurant, jukebox, pool table, and Sunday liquor license. Council's pleasure with those license renewals.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jackson. Discussion. Are there none question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried and the license renewals are approved. Thank you. Item number 2 under new business is the application to conduct an off-sale gambling for the Rainier Recreation Club on December 14 through the 16 at the Elks Club, 13th Street.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Drowba.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. Question on the motion or the resolution? None question?
Aye.
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 Yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted and the off-site gambling is approved for the Rainier Rec Club. Item number 3 is similar. It's a application for exempt permit to conduct a raffle for Paws and Claws, Coochin County, on April 13 at the Border Allenow Club, 14th Street. Motion by Counselor Kraus to approve.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs to adopt the resolution and approve the application. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted and the exempt permit to conduct the raffle is approved. Thank you. Item number 4 is to approve the employee return to work with conditions. The resolution before you, City Administrator, do you have anything that you want to add to that?
No, Mayor, other than we'll be coordinating with the employee about getting a updated work limitation from the healthcare provider. Other than that, I don't have any addition.
Thank you. Council's pleasure, then, with the employee return to work resolution.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Briggs.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Discussion on the resolution or the return to work. I have just one question, City Administrator, and that is in the now, therefore, be it resolved, item number 2. And just, I guess, maybe it's semantics, but how does the employee indemnify and hold the city harmless? Is there a... And maybe the city attorney needs to weigh in on that word. I guess, just the word "indemnify." Does that mean that they have to carry an insurance policy or is there some action that... Is it just the signing of this document that indemnifies?
No, Mr. Mayor, you know, what we're saying is that the employee would not be seeking any compensation from the city if somehow during the return to light work they aggravate their existing condition and have, you know, additional benefits or damages or things going. And that's, you know, it's basically, that clause is there to protect the city in the event they... ...implication and then they want to come back at the city.
So there's no external... Anything externally that the applicant needs to do in terms of the term?
Hopefully, it'll never come to pass and there won't be any aggravation, but the intent of this section is to limit the ability of the employee to come back against the city if there's some aggravation of their condition.
Good. Thank you. Further questions or discussion? Are there none question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted and the employee's return to work with conditions is approved. Item number 5 is a resolution authorizing the agreement for the disposition of the surplus 1982 fire department ladder truck.
So moved.
By Counselor Jackson to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. Discussion on the resolution or the agreement for the disposition of the fire department truck. Please, City Administrator.
Additional information. The fire chief and I have had conversations with the city administrator. Their fire department is meeting on the 10th and the city council is meeting on the 17th to consider this proposal. So assuming that they move forward with the parameters that we've outlined in this particular resolution, this resolution would authorize the city attorney to draft a sale agreement between the communities and then authorizes you and me to sign it on behalf of the City of International Falls. So our preliminary indications from the city administrator and fire chief and assistant chief is that they'd be open to moving forward with this, but they do want to try and get consensus from their fire department personnel and... A couple more steps to move forward.
Okay. Questions or discussion on the part of the city council with regard to the resolution or the agreement?
Is that a fair price for a ladder truck? $99?
Well, if you can't sell it, I think it's probably a very fair price.
I agree with that. I just wanted to throw it out there because, you know, some people would see, well, you just spent $100,000 on a new fire truck and you're selling your old one for $99. But no, I understand that it has very little value.
I think the company that we're purchasing it from, City Administrator, they have how many for sale?
It's reported that they have five of similar ladder trucks for sale and they can't... Careful to point out in this resolution that the chief has headed on Northline Fire Wire and then also Fire Safety USA, which is the company that the truck from. And nobody's expressed any interest in it with the Cook Fire Department, the Cabotogama Fire Department. Neither one of them are interested. I mean, it's a good truck. It has low hours on it, but it's just aged. It's a 1982, so it's over 36. The real value that we see in this agreement, we're complying with our local ordinance in terms of being... ...with our ordinance. And at the same time, it's just going to be 18 miles down the road. So in the event we have a need for an additional ladder truck, we have mutual aid with Fort Francis and they can bring their 100-foot ladder truck here. We can also have access to this 50-foot ladder truck if we would need to. Mutual aid basis and that would be a condition to transferring it to the City of Little Fork and mutual aid agreements with...
Kraus and Counselor Briggs.
No, that was exactly the point I was going to make is being able to have it available for mutual aid is good stuff. It keeps them...
Counselor Briggs.
A good benefit for PCA for cleaning out the clarifiers as specified in the contract too, so...
And the City Administrator and I discussed earlier to spell out the term Packaging Corporation of America and not just utilize PCA. Some folks may not know what that stands for, so... Further questions or discussion? Are there none? Chair would then call the question on the resolution.
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted approving the agreement for the sale of the 1982 fire department ladder truck. Item number 6 is to approve the recommendation from the Public Works Department to hire two personnel as maintenance worker, one employees per the local 49 labor agreement effective on or about December 19, 2018. Commissioner Brokaw, would you please come forward? Have a recommendation for the council?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. We had 39 applicants. We interviewed six... We scheduled six interviews. We had the sixth one canceled out 10 minutes before the interview, so we actually interviewed five. Very good applicants, very good pool. Our recommendation is to hire Daniel Sweeney and Calvin Turbin. And it would be our recommendation to start them at the 80%.
Council's pleasure with those two, with the two names and...
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Jackson.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kraus.
About 80% is the bottom, right?
It's 10% up. 70% is the bottom. They do, both of them have pre-existing qualifications that, with their boilers licenses and their past experience.
Very good. Any further questions for the commissioner or discussion on the part of the council? You've heard the two names recommended by the Public Works Department and the motion by Counselor Jackson and Counselor Kraus for Dan Sweeney and Cal Turbin. No further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Approval for the hire of those two persons is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number 7 is a, just an information piece from the Northland Foundation Business Finance Program. And they have a loan up to $100,000 available for businesses in Aitkin, Ruwabik, Chisholm, Ely, Evlith, Gilbert, Hibbing, and International Falls. Interest rates from 2% to 4%. If there's some businesses that are looking to do something, here's an opportunity for possible low-interest loan. Discussion on the part of the council or questions?
Somebody takes advantage of it.
All right. Anything further under new business?
I don't know if this is the right time. I can do it under boards and committees as well, but I did research some information through the League of Minnesota Cities on vacating hazardous buildings and by fire. Should I pass it out now or should I wait for boards and commissions? So I've been doing some research with, as Gary Corin and... This is Mason, I can't think of her name. Nancy M. Hoff has come in and brought attention to a lot of the buildings that we have in our community. I think we're all very knowledgeable that they're there and we have very weak policies in place to deal with the actual problems. I sent a information request to the League of Minnesota Cities and they sent back vast information on potential ordinances and revisions that we could do to our own. However, a vast, as we all know, a vast majority of our state does not have charter communities such as us. So Excelsior actually has the most likely one that we could adopt or come close to. And I've spoke with our building official and a lot of the issues that we have in ours is in time. We don't have timeframe set for policies on how to take care of the structures. This policy for Excelsior, I don't think is going to work for us 100%, but I would suggest that we send this to land use and legislation to send back, to have it looked at and went through, maybe update a couple of the dates. There are 30-day notices. There is one-year notices in here. But it basically gives a timeline of approximate, of one calendar year from the time that a building is deemed unfit. And in that one year, they have timelines that they can meet with the building official and come up with a plan on how they're going to fix it. But if nothing happens from one calendar year from when the, it's deemed unfit or it has a fire or there's something that causes it in the findings section of why the building is being targeted, if in one calendar year it isn't fixed, it can be tore down and then assessed to the taxes of the property owner.
Enter into an additional addendum to our contract for the comprehensive land use plan and ordinance review. So is there still, are they still working on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Administrator, please.
Yes, in response to that question, they are. They're working on the comprehensive plan, which lays out our policy and development guidelines. The other two ordinances that they're working on, one is their division of ordinance, which deals with how you plat and develop properties in the future. So I don't know that this particular ordinance applies to either of those. Again, in our past conversations, the city has three separate chapters in the Code of Ordinances that deal with blight in one form or another. There's Chapter 4, Chapter 10, Chapter 10, I think deals with public protection and nuisance issues. Housing issues are addressed in one of the other chapters. What we need to do is look at opting a new ordinance, consolidating property maintenance and blight enforcement and rental licensing into one code is what we've talked about doing in the past. And then repealing certain sections of those other three chapters into one new chapter in the city code. So this vacant and hazardous buildings ordinance, and again, this would be the first Excelsior's, but they all have similar provisions in it and this can be used as a resource to draft ours and get some... And, you know, the city council has talked about this in the past and it was a high priority and it's sitting in my lap to complete that work and it's just a fair undertaking given that there's so much... ...that would have to be repealed. Certain sections are retained and then redrafted into a new code. So I think we've talked about this before. We were going to use the City of Columbia Heights ordinance because again, it was, he appealed it in all three occasions. ...that has small lots, some of it's aging, stock predating World War II, so very... Add some of that work and some of that information in place. Is it... No?
I think with the Land Use and Legislation Committee working with the Housing Committee, if we put enough... I mean, you can't do everything by yourself over there, Administrator. I think we put enough energy and resources, we can come up. This is a source of frustration in our community that we don't have a clear path to resolve issues. I really appreciate you bringing this forward and doing extra homework on this, Counselor Drowba. I concur that we need to move more quickly on this than we have and it is frustrating, so...
And now that Administrator Anderson brings up Columbia Heights, I actually had forgotten that we had talked about Columbia Heights in the past. That's something that we could look at and compare the two. But I really just think that our Land Use and Legislation Committee, just, we don't get a lot of projects that they have on. I mean, HR has been working with contract negotiations. They've been doing stuff for the last nine months. Same thing with Public Works. We've been meeting, for the most part, at least once a month for an hour and a half to two-hour meetings. Our committees of the whole, we have... Our committees of the whole, we have everyone here, and we seem to have three or four items on the agenda. And again, we can take up three or four hours talking about three or four items on the agenda. And I just think that if Land Use and Legislation could go through one or two copies of the options on how we can take care of these hazardous buildings, and have one item on the agenda, and hammer it out over the course of a month, and just, you know, maybe two meetings in a month, and just see what works, what doesn't work. I think that's where we kind of fall short sometimes as a city council, is we want to get so much stuff done, and we have this monumental task. We have so many things going on in our community, but we have a hard time focusing on just one or two items. We are trying to get our arms around everything, from the budget to public works, sales tax, you know, elections. I mean, we have so much stuff on our plate, and I think if we could utilize the smaller committees that we have and hammer out something like this in a meeting or two, then bring it to the committee of the whole, and then the committee of the whole can just get a final say-so of, well, let's just change this and this, and then bring it back to the city council. I just think that if we continue to have one or two small items that we can knock out on the agenda and move them back up, we're going to be able to get more done as a city council, rather than loading up our agendas, so we're just trying to get through it. We're not really finishing anything. We're just trying to get through agendas.
I think it's important that we capitalize on the energy in the community that we've heard about at city council, people coming forward. They're eager to help, and we've got the comprehensive land use plan completed. We've just got the housing study completed. So there's energy and information in various sources. So time is of the essence once in a while. I know in government, things move slowly, but I, you know, I won't be here to push that through, but I'll be on the Housing Committee, so... I think your idea is excellent, and it can't all fall on one person in city government to do it either, so...
I agree with that. I know Ken has, well, everything on his desk. I mean legitimately, every single thing that comes through this or any other committee ends up on his desk. And I don't know, I think we, as elected officials, I mean, we can't do everything either, but we can get the framework of what we'd like to see done. I'd like to see that moving forward with our next city council, is to be able to do a couple more things and not be pushing it off to administration all the time. Obviously, they need to be cognizant on what we're doing, but, you know, just because we go through and kind of come up with some ideas of what we'd like to do on a policy doesn't necessarily mean that we need to throw it all right back to the administrator.
Take your opposed ordinance and a motion to refer to the Land Use and Legislation Committee. And would you include the fire chief and the building inspector as a part of that, so they can give their input on the ordinance and...
Yes. Along with Columbia Heights, if that was one of the other ones we were going to look at.
All right, so the city of Excelsior and the city of Columbia Heights, their ordinances?
Correct.
Thank you. So I take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Briggs. Further discussion? Thank you for getting this information for us, Council Doba. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried, and so this is referred to the Land Use and Legislation Committee, including the fire chief, building inspector, and city administrator. Thank you. Please.
I'd also like to invite the two new counselors, or at least send an invitation to them to attend that, to get their insight on it also. You know, welcome to come.
Certainly. Meetings are always open.
Yeah. Because, you know, it's just a start of what we're going to get done, and you'll probably have to take the ball and run with it from there, so I'd certainly like your opinions and what you have to say about it, so...
We'll take you to coffee and fill you in.
Crap, don't do it.
All right, thank you. Go to reports of the boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just follow up on your comments about the Northland Foundation Business Finance Program, the $100,000 loans that are available to that do need to be processed through a local bank, but it's a great resource at 2% to 4% interest rate. And I want to take this opportunity to also point out to the business community that the city of Columbia Falls has a commercial loan program where we would loan up to $24,999 to somebody for structural improvements and expansion. Also, so it's very attractive and is also processed through a financial institution first. Back on that loan program and make some resources to promote local development projects there.
We have some changing of the guard in town as far as long-established businesses, so this is very timely. In fact, maybe we should copy this to those parties that are involved in that changing of the guard.
City Administrator, with regard to the local city business loan fund, there are monies available?
Yes, we have, it's in the neighborhood of $150,000. Five or six loans.
Very good. Thank you.
Follow-up question on that. How, we have any collection issues?
I don't believe we have, no.
Okay.
Further from the city administrator? Further?
No, other than at 6 o'clock tonight, just a reminder that we do have the Truth in Taxation public hearing. That meeting tonight at 6 o'clock.
Right, thank you.
And I would like to add that I am hoping to have a HR committee meeting after the metro report comes out. And it's important, I think, Brian, you and I have been following it closely, so I'm hoping that we can provide some follow-through before we leave our seats. So that report comes out on the 12th.
That's correct.
So I would like to have a meeting really close to that, so that if we want, what day is the 12th?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Public Works is meeting on the following Thursday, I believe.
And our council meeting is the 17th, so if we were going to put something on the agenda, we'd have to have it on there on Wednesday, right?
Well, we can do it as an addition on Friday mornings.
Okay. That gives us some time to meet and decide if we want to recommend anything to council.
Thank you. Move to city attorney, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing special to report.
Thank you. Chief Mastin.
I have no report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chief Manasa.
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Brokaw, further?
I have nothing else to share.
Thank you. Building inspector.
No, I have nothing yet.
Deputy Administrator.
We're going to get everybody out there.
Quiet day and...
We do have 45 minutes to kill.
Thank you.
We could have a Land Use and Legislation Committee meeting.
Go to reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. I would just, under the mayor's report, bring to your attention the first item on the mayor's report with regard to the North Kooch area sanitary district and the proposed budget that has not been adopted yet by the district board. The estimated International Falls cost would be about a little over $1.2 million. I think $1,254,000, I think was the number, if I remember correctly, as compared to the East Kooch, expected income of $171,000 and $20,000 for Rainier. So you can see who's carrying the load there.
That load would be more equitably distributed if the rates weren't all based on volume.
Very true.
No utility bills the way we bill.
I had a note from board minutes that I think the Environmental Services Director indicated that part of the Island View project, there's 49 services that have been hooked up and operational now as part of the new expansion project, so it's a higher number than I thought maybe would be done at this time, so... With those additional services this year, and then I believe that they're due to be up by midsummer 2019.
It is not going to make the impact that a fixed cost eligible to the three major customers based on the number of hookups within those units would have. If we had a different allocation, it would reduce our share from 88% down to 75%. Adding 49 users isn't going to do that, when you're basing it on volume.
Also bring to your attention under the mayor's report, under item number four, and that was the Kooching Housing Collaborative Meeting the city administrator and I attended. Do want to bring to the public's attention that the final report for the county and the city of International Falls will be made on January 17 of 2019 at 6:00 in the evening at the Bacca's Auditorium. And I would ask the council to approve expenses for both radio and newspaper advertising so that contractors, bankers, realtors, and others would come out to that meeting and hear that, and get copies of that final report. So council's pleasure with regard to the advertising of that meeting?
So move.
Motion by Council Jackson.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Council Crouse. Expend some dollars for advertising on radio and newspaper with regard to the meeting on the housing report. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried.
You get the same people at that meeting, no matter if you advertise it or not.
No, got to make people aware of these meetings. Thank you. Further, under council committees, boards, and commissions.
Oh, I have something.
Yes, please.
Cable Commission. I received a complaint. I'm going to talk about the Cable Commission, because it's been brought up at council a couple of times. The Cable Commission is essential, it never existed, and it didn't operate. Maybe it existed, but it didn't operate until I became on the council. And then we kicked off the Cable Commission, and we negotiated a, or we negotiated new contract with Midco. We are a captured service area up here. We don't have any competition with another cable company. So essentially, we are beholden and supplicant to Midco. There really isn't much we can do. But Cable Commission is supposed to take consumer complaints, right? It's actually a consumer complaint screening committee. It's not a real popular thing to do, especially when you have no power, which we don't. We don't have any power. And so our commission hasn't been meeting, because we don't have any members, because nobody wants to do that. And so what I did when I got my last complaint was I turned it over to you. Because it means, I mean, that's what the Cable Commission is trying to do, is sort out contractual issues to some degree. Nobody on there is an attorney. And this particular issue that came forward has to do with some sort of unconscionable contract, in my opinion, to be able to be released and have to pay this exorbitant fee. I, you did get it, they dropped it off at your office. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to see it. It would be beyond the Cable Commission's, it would be beyond my ability to even decipher all that. I'm not doing that, frankly. So I'm just going to give you that update on the Cable Commission, because I won't be here next year to give you the flavor of what the Cable Commission is all about, right? When we did have the Cable Commission, we did a couple of things. We spent a year negotiating a contract, and we also helped work with interested parties in the city to rejuvenate the city's franchise television channel. Those are the two things we did. We accomplished a lot when we were operating. Now we're relegated to consumer complaints. So that's what you're going to ask citizens to do.
Counselor, I did appoint folks to the Cable Commission, but they never held any meetings and...
No, no, they resigned.
Well, in the end, they resigned, yes.
Yeah. No, they resigned almost immediately. Because there's just nothing to do. What's the purpose? What's the purpose of having a Cable Commission?
Well, I think certainly reviewing the franchise, and yes, you don't have a lot of leverage, but because we don't have competition, but we certainly can make sure that the franchise is being lived up to.
I'm not, I don't think anybody, any average citizen is going to be capable of deciphering whether the conditions of service for any particular customer will conform to the contract itself. So I do think that essentially what you have is a need for a city attorney to look at some of that. So that's my opinion.
You're more capable of determining that than the commission?
I mean, you know...
Network or DirecTV?
So we do have competition.
We have competition in that regard, but when you're talking about cable, which is a different kind of service, really. We only have one cable. Bemidji has two. I think the Iron Range has a couple. So you've got more competition in other cities.
We were one of the first cities in the state to have cable, back in 1957. Further reports of council committees, boards, and commissions? Not anyone else in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time? Council has correspondence, and as the city administrator pointed out, at 6:00 p.m., the council will conduct the Truth in Taxation public hearing and input meeting, and we will review the 2019 budget and tax levy at that time. There's nothing further to come before the council at this time. Will stand adjourned.